March regular meeting to order. I call the march regular meeting to order. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Good evening, Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
Dr. Tim Merrick.
I'm here.
David Perry.
Here.
And Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Madam Chair. Ms. Barnhart.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Under information, I had reached out to Attorney General Jeff Jackson after our board adopted the letter and was able to meet with him Thursday and would like to share it with the board. Oh, thank you. Would like to share it with the board just some information, kind of our frustrations that we expressed to his cabinet and the response that we received. So five minute, under information, no action, but I felt it unless if you would rather extend the time for the DPI letters discussion so that we can include that conversation.
Second. Okay, which would you, what's your actual motion?
A five-minute information, under information discussion of the conversation with the Attorney General.
Okay, and Ms. Bradford seconded that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adding an update of the power school discussion with the AG office to information signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. All right. Do I, oh, there were two hands and they went up at almost the exact same time. I'm going to go this way. So Ms. Bradford.
I would like to amend the agenda to add, under old business, a discussion of Superintendent Barnes and the staffs planned that they promised us for today's meeting for a change of curriculum for stepping stones. It somehow missed the agenda.
I'll second that.
And that was under old business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. How much time do you need?
Me, just five minutes, but I don't know when he's going to present his plan, so it might be up to the super.
How long do you need, sir?
Well, it is the plan that I emailed you guys earlier today, so we can talk about it and be ready to discuss it whenever.
Okay, so do you need like 10 minutes?
I can do it in 10.
All right, 10 minutes, okay.
I hit seven.
I can name that song, name that tune. All right, any further discussion on that amendment, amended, yes, amendment? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adding that discussion under old business signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Dr. Merrick.
I'd like to make two agenda modifications. I'd like to switch Roman numeral seven and numeral, Roman numeral six because I think we should affirm our minutes, which include saying yes to Superintendent Barnes before we actually sign them in.
I'll second that.
Seven and eight, you mean?
Was it seven and eight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's number one. You want to go ahead and second that? That's great.
I did. I've already done that.
Okay, and so let's vote on that. All those in favor of swapping seven and eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Dr. Merrick, you had one more.
Yeah, it's a small thing, but I would like to change item that reads super interim superintendent's report to superintendent's.
Second.
Agreed. I agree. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Now with all of those amendments, do I hear a motion to approve the multiply amended agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Continuing on, we have the invocation, which is being done by Reverend Deacon Rhonda Thomas of the Church of the Servant. After that, we will have the National Anthem and the pledge.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this invocation tonight. So I'll take a moment and take a breath, close our eyes. We're all here because we care about our children, teachers, and other school-related employees. We're all here because we care about the future of this community. During tonight's meeting, let respect be the cornerstone upon which our interactions are built. Let our words be guided by a deep appreciation for the diverse perspectives that enrich our discussions. With each exchange, let us honor the uniqueness of every individual, and through this invocation of respect, let us foster an environment where every voice is heard and valued. And let us strive to keep open minds and listen with open hearts. Amen.
Now with the National Anthem, we have Mr. Vedder, music teacher at Wrightsville Beach and orchestra teacher at Hogard High School.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And I'd ask Ms. Bradford to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I do not. I do.
So the next item on the agenda is an approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Continuing on, we have the swearing in of the superintendent. You've already signed the contract. You can't go anywhere. You're stuck now. Do you need? Does he, do you, Dr. Barnes, do you need a Bible? There you go, sir. That right there.
If you agree to file, I'll have to file that to ensure. First, I'll ask you to state your name. Christopher Martin Barnes. You solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as the superintendent of New Hanover County Schools this fourth day of March 2025. You agree, we say aye. Congratulations.
And we all thought that you liked gold stars. We have a little present too.
Not playing by nature.
Ooh, it makes like a chin.
Careful, don't look at the back.
Nice.
Oh, okay.
Why is it ticking?
It's Fort Knox, that's right.
Yes.
So you have this court case, making this online okay. Yeah, there's three pointer. You want me to sign it too?
Hmm.
Signing his life away over there.
Yes, sir. Now, anyone who knows me knows that if you thought this would be reverent and solemn occasions, you are great.
All right, continuing in the fun, let's do our recognitions.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We're going to start this evening with Dr. Katie Fink, who is going to be helping us to recognize our National Board Certified Teachers this evening.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent, Dr. Barnes. I am Katie Fink. My official title is Beginning Teacher Support and Evaluation Specialist, but one of the many hats that I get the pleasure of, of wearing is also that of the National Board Coordinator for our district, and that is what brings me before you this evening. National Board Certification is the gold standard in the teaching profession. It is a rigorous professional experience created for teachers and by teachers to determine practices of accomplished teaching. The certification process requires the completion of three portfolio-based components, which demonstrate what teachers can do, as well as an assessment component, which shows the teacher's knowledge. The certification process can take anywhere from one to three years, and once all of those components have been complete, candidates submit them in May and then start the, the agony of waiting until December to hear the results that are announced by the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. North Carolina leads the nation in the number of National Board Certified Teachers, with 23% of teachers holding this title. In New Hanover County Schools, we now have 438 National Board Certified Teachers, thanks to the group of teachers that we are going to be recognizing this evening. So without further ado, I'm eager to announce our initially certified candidates from 2023, and then we also will recognize them from 2024 as well. So starting with the 2023 folks, we'll start with Emerald Boyd. She is from the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley.
We're going to do individual photos. No, they don't get it. This group already has.
Next, we have Crystal Corbett from Edwin A. Anderson Elementary. Natalie Triggs from College Park Elementary. And Emily Willis from Porter Snack Elementary. The 2023 folks to come.
All right, big round of applause.
Now we'll recognize our 2024 initial candidates. They will also receive a foam board that we provide from the district that they get to display outside of their classrooms so that everyone knows that they are now an NBCT. We'll start with Ms. Sarah Bedeo from Masonboro Elementary. Christina Cheers from Edwin A. Anderson Elementary. Alexandria Fowler from Mary C. Williams Elementary. Carrie Giralamy from John J. Blair Elementary. Oh, I have a lot. No, I have a lot. Sydney Goggins from Mary C. Williams Elementary. Megan Grossclose from Forest Hills Elementary. Holly Hatchell from Forest Hills Elementary. Jamie Lang from Dr. Herbert Eaton Senior Elementary. Meredith Mitchell from Dr. Herbert Eaton Senior Elementary. Mary Porter from Pine Valley Elementary. Elizabeth Rappold from Emma B. Trask Middle School. Marissa Rizzo from Masonboro Elementary. Natasha Roney from Dr. John Cottington Elementary. Jennifer Smith from New Hanover High School. Kelsey Stott from Murrayville Elementary. And I believe our last three are not with us this evening, but we have Caroline Strickland from Bradley Creek, Kathleen Ward from Murrayville Elementary, and Allison Waters from the International School at Gregory.
Okay, now don't move.
Yeah, so congratulations again to all of our 23, 24 initially certified candidates. You really have joined an elite group of educators, and New Hanover County Schools could... not be more proud of you. Thank you to the Board for recognizing them this evening. Absolutely. Now we are at 438.
Well, I can't let Dr. Fink have all the fun, so it's my turn. All right. Tonight, we want to celebrate the outstanding determination and talent of Porter Neck Elementary's first Spelling Bee winner Knox Lee. Come on up, Mr. Knox. Come on up, buddy. All right. So in the world of spelling bees, every letter counts, the competition is fierce, the words are challenging, and the stakes get higher and higher with each round. But through it all, Knox stood out, demonstrating his exceptional grasp of language, his focus, drive, and perseverance truly define success. Knox won out of 40 of his peers. This was Pine Valley's first Spelling Bee sponsored by Our City Rocks and hosted at the Davis Community. Now Knox will be representing New Hanover County in the Carolina Panthers Regional Spelling Bee on March 9th in Charlotte for a chance to spell in the SIPS National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC. Yes. Congratulations Knox. Come on down, folks. We're gonna do this again.
Can he spell awesome?
All right, congratulations Knox. You can stay here if you'd like. You might as well. You'll get to sit shortly. All right. So this evening, I'd like you to join us in celebrating the incredible achievement of Ashley High School senior Clem Camacho from Ashley High School for winning the NCHSAA 4A Swimming 200-Meter Men's Freestyle State Championship. That was a lot. Come on up here. All right. Throughout his swimming career, Clem has exemplified what it means to be a dedicated athlete, always striving to improve, always staying focused on his goals, and always supporting his team with a positive attitude and unwavering spirit. Wings up. During his season, Clem took home many wins, and this championship swim set a new record for our district by touching the wall at 13757. He also made first runner-up for 100-yard men's butterfly with both events qualifying him for All-American status. We are fortunate to have such a talented and driven individual in our district, someone who leads by example and encourages us all to strive for our personal best. We look forward to seeing you continue to find success, especially in your next chapter at Virginia Tech, where you will keep growing your talents in swimming and furthering your education. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I've got saved an amazing one for you here. In New Hanover County Schools, we celebrate the students, staff, and volunteers who demonstrate the character that make our schools positive, safe, and respectful. Often, the true heroes in our community are the ones who work quietly behind the scenes without seeking recognition, but when a life is saved, we can't let that moment pass without acknowledging incredible selflessness and quick acting. Would you please play the video?
I had received a text message that Selena, one of our fantastic custodians, saved a life. One of our students was eating here in this beautiful cafeteria, ran out of the cafeteria. Ms. Selena happened to notice her in distress, followed her into the bathroom. When she arrived, student was unable to talk or and was visibly in distress, unable to breathe, and Selena immediately jumped into action, gave the child the Heimlich, and saved that child's life.
When you work with the school system, it's not about making a living, it's about making a difference. And we've got a kid, for the rest of the time that they're on earth, they might not have been or haven't been for you. I just wanted to give you this and tell you thank you.
Thank you.
And how amazing it is what you do. So thank you for stepping in and thank you for doing what you're doing.
This month's Character and Action Award goes to custodian Selena Merlos for her choice to help a student in need at Trask Middle School. She is unable to be with us this evening, but her principal, Ms. Clark, is here to accept the award on her behalf. Where'd she go? Come on up here. So Ms. Merlos makes an impact every day, from making the school a safe and positive environment to ensuring that each day runs smoothly. But in this moment, we see how deeply her presence is meant in her building. This is more than a job to her, it is about caring for each and every person in the Trask community, whether it's a smile in the hallways, a helping hand, or in this case, saving a life when it mattered most. We would like to thank Ms. Merlos and give her a big round of applause. Thank you. And this concludes recognitions for the evening.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, we do not have any student voice representatives this evening, so next item will be Teacher Voice, which is our CTEC Science teacher, Rick Kukor, who's going to do a presentation. Is he here? Do you see him?
I do not see him. We can go ahead and go on, and then I'll find him.
Okay. Well, the next thing is the Superintendent's Report.
First, I want to touch on a couple of things with you folks tonight for our March report. I can't believe it's March 2025 already. I want to make sure I inform you folks about our communication protocol. As a reminder, what I've tried to do over the last several months is send District Communications first to the Board, then to Principals, then to all staff, and lastly, send all to families and community. This ensures that we're doing clear and consistent messaging throughout our schools. District Communications are items such as the message we sent earlier today about the possible impact of severe weather on our area tomorrow. Again, I want to remind you, no decision has been made, but we did want to alert everybody there's a potential for a delayed dismissal of our bus riders tomorrow. So as soon as we know for sure, we'll send out an update to everybody. We are now officially more than halfway to spring break, and I know that everyone is working hard to support our students and schools. I want to take a moment to thank every one of you for your dedication and perseverance during this busy time of the year. A very special recognition is coming up on March 7th, which is Maintenance Workers' Appreciation Day. Our maintenance staff play a crucial role in keeping our schools safe, clean, and operational every day. So please take a moment to show your appreciation and thank them for their hard work. Regarding enrollment, we want to encourage families to register as early as possible to ensure access to all school assignment options. Enrollment opened on March 1st, and key application dates can be found on the website. But we want to note that due to the transition to a new student information system, the processing for 25-26 enrollment and transfer applications will experience some delays in June and July. So online enrollment through scribbles will end June 30th with new applications available in Infinite Campus on July 7. Transfer requests submitted by May 31st will be processed by June 30th. We appreciate your patience and encourage early enrollment to help make this a smooth process. Finally, I want to take a moment to recognize School Social Worker Week. Our school social workers face incredible challenges all throughout the school year, addressing student needs with strength, resilience, and compassion. This week is a time to celebrate their dedication and the powerful impact that they have on students, families, and our school communities. Their work is invaluable, and we thank them for their commitment to making a difference. Thank you for your time and dedication to our schools. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and I appreciate what you do to support students and families. For details about other upcoming events, there is a flyer in the back of the room we'll turn your eyes towards. Feel free to take one of these on your way out. It'll give you more information for everything. And lastly, I just have to say I am truly honored and grateful for the trust and the support of the New Hanover County Board of Education, our educators, our students, our families, and the entire community. Serving as the permanent superintendent to New Hanover County Schools is a privilege that I quite frankly wasn't sure I wanted, but now I do. But I remain committed to fostering a culture of collaboration, transparency, and student-centered decision-making. I appreciate the Board's confidence in my leadership and the collective efforts of our staff and families in creating an environment where every student can be successful. Together, we will continue to build a strong, supportive, and thriving school system that prioritizes excellence and the well-being of all students. Thank you for your commitment to our shared vision for New Hanover County Schools, and that concludes my comments.
All right, next up is me. It's been a busy month for the Board. February was extremely busy, and we continue to be busy as we discuss the budget and participate in so many different school celebrations all over. On the 14th, several Board members were able to attend and celebrate the ribbon cutting for CTEC's new construction trades building and culinary arts lab. Upon completion of the ribbon cutting, all were given a student-guided tour of the school and new facilities, and were then treated with some delectable foods prepared by the students in the culinary arts program. My favorite was the carrot cake cookies with the cream cheese frosting in the middle. It was delicious. On February 18th, the Downtown Wilmington Rotary Club held its annual Rookie Teacher of the Year ceremony, celebrating outstanding achievements among beginning teachers. We were able to celebrate all of the nominees and find that Maddie Johnson, an English teacher at Ashley High School, was named the 2025 Rookie of the Year. Congratulations to all the nominees and to Ms. Johnson. Our students are also doing some amazing things. One such student, Houston Sutton, had an idea to support our gifted student population with peer support and shared that idea with the Gifted Advisory Council last year. He worked tirelessly to establish a pilot school and saw great success. This school year, he expanded his program to more schools, and his program, titled AIG Buddies, and if you look on Instagram, you can find it, has earned him an award from the North Carolina Association for the Gifted and Talented for Leadership Through Service. Congratulations to Houston. Another unsung hero in our district is a mom who has dedicated years to supporting our AIG students, Cara Johnson. The former chair of the Gifted Advisory Council has earned the James J. Gallagher Advocacy Awards for her efforts in advocating for the AIG students and families of our district. Congratulations, Cara. In addition to these amazing individuals, I was able to make a visit to two schools this month that are very near and dear to my heart. The first school was Forest Hills Global Elementary School, and I normally have the opportunity to go volunteer weekly in that school, but I wanted to get a bird's eye view, so I sat down with the principal. The great things he told me about Forest Hills are innumerable, but the greatest thing is the growth that the teachers and students have made in the past year. It is a school on an upward trajectory with a leader who has a vision and the drive and staff who are motivated to grow our students. The other school I visited was Winter Park. This school has a special place in my heart as it was one that my own children attended. And while I would boast of the small, tight-knit community that exists within the school or the garbage-to-gardens program, the principal noted that the composition of the school's population reflects that of the Wilmington community. It is a school where teachers know most, if not all, the students by name, which in turn brings about an environment of familiarity and safety. I'm so grateful for the variety of schools, administrators, teachers, and students that we have in our district. Thank you to each of you for all that you do, and this concludes my report. Do we have the teacher yet? I do not see him. So moving forward, I'm going to hand over the reins to Vice Chair Barnhart to begin the call to audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we're going to start with Rob Mayers.
Okay, thank you. Deborah Brunson. Deborah Brunson? Okay.
Members of the Board, how is New Hanover County Schools' curriculum determined, particularly in social study? I'm sorry, let me stop. How much time do I have? How much? So it's what, two minutes long?
Yes. Can you please start the time over again?
Am I supposed to be talking now?
Yes, we just started the time over for you. There you go.
Okay, all right. Thank you. How's New Hanover County curriculum determined, particularly in social studies, history, and language arts? What's the procedure and process? I couldn't really find it on the website. I emailed a staff member, but I did not hear back from that person. So I went to the Department of Education last Friday. I noticed that there was a major revision in the, on the national level about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And after realizing that a lot of what they said was not enforceable, they came back and said that schools may include programs that celebrate cultures and heritages like Black History Month. They are not illegal. The Department of Education prohibits the department from exercising control over content of school curricula. However, Title VI obligates schools not to create hostile environments through race-based policies, stereotypes, et cetera. I believe that not sharing diverse literature is hostile, and it is harassment. Homogenizing history is hostile. The Trail of Tears happened, the Tuskegee experiments happened, redlining happened, black lung disease still happens, Agent Orange happened, 1898 happened. The immortal life of Henrietta Lacks happened, and I brought a painting of her that has hung in the National Portrait Museum in Washington, DC. This woman died in 1951. Her cells are still being used by the scientific community. They have probably saved people's lives right here in this room through cancer, Parkinson's disease, COVID, et cetera. So why is this not appropriate material? Why can this not be shared?
Loretta Stackhouse. Anne Ooms.
Hello. My name is Anne Ooms, and I'm a parent of three children here at New Hanover County Schools. And I've never spoken like this before. It's making my voice getting real nervous. One of the things that is a deeply held belief of mine is the separation of church and state. However, I'm also a person who However, I'm also a person who has been raised in a faith that is deep and profound and believes that all children are created by God, including transgender and sexual minority children. And I'm very concerned with what is going on with DEI. I hear claims of what God has done, and that is not the faith that I was raised in. I was raised in a faith that Red Milton, who believes that one of the safest ways to understand things is to read promiscuously, to read broadly, that how can you choose what is moral when that has, moral has been chosen for you? And so I want my children to be able to receive stepping stones to education. I want to be able to make that choice. A number of you have run on parent choice, and currently, it is so beautiful. We each can choose what is best for our own children. And I want my children to be able to understand multiple viewpoints. I want them to be able to go in the world with their own understandings of what they know, having read broadly and understood greatly. And I don't want us to create a state of invisibility for those who are on the margins that emboldens bullies, it emboldens violence, and we need to be avoiding that. And I am going to end because I am going to ramble, but I would love to speak with any of you individually, and I don't want to bring my faith into this because this is a secular place, and also when I hear that brought in in such a profound way and claims of what God believes and that aligns with power, that is the emphasis of my faith system. Thank you.
Safety has never been the priority of New Hanover County Schools. In recent weeks, we've had a student thrown through a window, a student hit by a car again crossing the road from their school, EC teachers injured trying to do their job amidst your staff cuts, fights involving as many as 45 students, hours spent in the dark due to a major power outage that you refuse to communicate to parents about, students in mental health crisis, and severe cases of bullying because the board has encouraged division. The district responds by moving the entire team of SROs who have built relationships with students from the most crowded and violent school in the district and replacing them with cops who criminalize, requiring more outside law enforcement and dogs in classrooms that destroy property. You strip pre-K, our most vulnerable population, of their Title I and local funding, preventing access for families to resources and ceasing professional development, but expect us to believe that you're invested in refaming behavior for the district. You discard DEI, just send a clear message of your bigotry and straight white supremacy, and you refuse to hold the settlement with the victims of sexual assault by attacking the very law that protects them, Title IX, in your quest to dismantle the committee that was devised as a part of that settlement, continuing to put students at risk. You retaliate against teachers and students when they bravely use their voices to ask for help. You destroy family life education, a program that has successfully reduced teenage pregnancy and STI numbers for decades because of your obsession with harming LGBTQ+ kids. You compromise the mental health needs of students through irresponsible policymaking and hate, and then you attempt to silence our voices so the public remains uninformed, and you confiscate cell phones to further endanger kids. Children have lost their lives because of your recklessness, and you seem to wear that like a badge of honor. None of you have mental health degrees or experience, and very few in public education meanwhile you work to destroy both. Your actions have consequences, and as a community, so do ours, and we're tired of sacrificing our children.
My name is Elizabeth McLeod. I'm a first-time speaker to this board. Policy 4303 Fair Consistent Disciplined Administration states, quote, "The board recognizes the negative effects of exclusionary discipline on a range of student outcomes, and therefore has reserved the sanctions of suspension and expulsion for only the most serious violations of the code of student conduct," end quote. See if you recognize any of these negative effects. Children who were suspended from school are as much as 10 times more likely to experience academic failure, repeat a grade, drop out of high school, hold negative school attitudes. Children who are suspended from school are more likely to behave worse when they return to school, have poor attendance, not graduate on time, and are more likely to be arrested and incarcerated. Again, Policy 4303 states, "The board recognizes the negative effects of exclusionary discipline." If the board recognizes the negative effects of exclusionary discipline, why would you subject any child to a suspension or seclusion? Why are you setting them up for failure? Why are you punishing them instead of helping them? At a minimum, Policy 4303 should say, quote, "The board recognizes the negative effects of exclusionary discipline on a range of student outcomes, and therefore has ended the use of out-of-school suspensions for all five, six, and seven-year-olds." Thank you.
Thank you.
Last month, the school board voted 5 to 2 to add one sentence to short-term suspension policy 4351. So now the policy has three sentences. The student has the right to be present at the informal hearing but does not have the right to have a parent or other representative present. It also says principals or their designees shall attempt to contact parents' guardians as soon as possible when a suspension determination is made. That's the new sentence. It also says that a student is not entitled to appeal the principal's decision to impose a short-term suspension. In other words, a parent of a five, six, or seven-year-old cannot be with their child during the hearing, can only learn about a suspension after the decision has been made, and that decision is final. The fact is that Policy 4351 was actually written for older students. A separate policy should be written for our youngest learners. It should be a policy that keeps them in school where they can learn the social and emotional skills they need to prevent bad behavior, and it would include a developmentally appropriate restorative practices that aim to repair the harm done to the victims. Parents deserve the opportunity to ask questions before the principal decides to kick their kid out of school. Whatever happened to parents' rights?
Good evening. I'm not exactly sure what the majority decided with your votes last Tuesday. To be honest, I don't really think you know what you voted to do either. The motions that you make are so couched in bizarre political legal language, or language as the Dear Colleague letter, that you're twisting yourself into pretzels to try and follow, which perhaps is by design, as there seems to be more about theatrics to this and less about academics, which is why I was confused at your collective response to the dramatic changes to a five-year strategic plan and the scrubbing of our policies of DEI was, "We are just following the law." Now, I'm not advising against open defiance of the law. That's just me. This majority has flirted with defying state law you don't agree with. You have all talked about defying SEL laws, and you've talked about explored violating the state's calendar law. In taking the action the board took on Tuesday, you are not following the law. You are interpreting it and twisting it to do what you've always wanted to do. The Dear Colleague letter is not law. It's the view of the Trump administration about what the existing law says. Their view flies in the face of decades of legal precedent, and the letter itself is in no way legally binding. Put another way, you haven't been instructed to do anything. This board has agency. When policies are put in place that are unpopular, when we cease to learn about 1898, or when Black History Month, and Emmett Till, and Women's History Month, and Seneca Falls are thrown to the wasteland, it won't be because of law, it will be because of your agenda, which you have actively and successfully pursued, and you should be proud. Do not hide, but do not misunderstand that the voters will know the truth. Take a lesson from Mr. Perry, who publicly accuses these people behind me of indoctrinating our children. As you see, our employees in New Hanover County don't indoctrinate anybody, they save lives. You owe these people an apology, sir.
Elizabeth Nagle? Did I say the last name right? Nagaly?
Nagley.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Nagley. I'm a parent of two elementary students who attend a New Hanover County elementary school, and like Anne, this is my first time attending and speaking at a school board meeting, but I felt that I had to be here tonight to voice my strong opposition to the changes that you are considering that would limit families' access to choice and sex education by removing or altering the Stepping Stones curriculum. I'm asking you to reaffirm what the selection data already shows. Parents and caregivers in this county want their children to have the option to receive medically accurate, comprehensive information to protect themselves and for their students to make informed decisions about their health. Additionally, I urge you to consider how this decision will shape the way that this school board responds to future attempts by the Trump administration to interfere with the local control of education. This decision does not stand in isolation. It sets a dangerous precedent for the future of our schools. It signals that this school board and the district's senior leadership will preemptively surrender to empty political threats, even those threats that have no legal standing and actively cause harm to our communities. Stripping away parts of the Stepping Stones curriculum is not about legal compliance, it's about censorship. It dictates what students can and cannot learn, whose identities hold value, and whose are erased. And it exposes a deep contradiction. The board members here who campaigned on parental choice are not truly committed to its principle. Rather than protecting families' abilities to choose, they are attempting to impose their own ideologies by limiting families to a single option of abstinence-only education. I urge you to uphold the program that has been chosen by students and resist outside pressure that undermines our children's learning. Please keep Stepping Stones as is. Thank you.
Good evening. While working with defendants of the Nuremberg Trials, Captain G.M. Gilbert was searching for the nature of evil and stated, "Evil, I think, is the absence of empathy, a genuine incapacity to feel with their fellow men." For decades, parents of New Hanover County Schools have valued the choice to make an informed decision to opt into family life, my life, or opt out of both. Since early 2024, the board has heard from current and past students, teachers, parents, professors, on how helpful family life is at removing the ick and uncomfortableness of important topics families find challenging to discuss. Over 90% of parents opted into family life. The majority of this board continues to put energy into dismantling it. Now another tack on parental choice, a topic many of you ran on to be elected. Here we are again, fighting for a family's rights for education based on science and fact, not personal religious beliefs. Most vaccine is you hide behind an executive order from a purposely chaos-inducing regime to push forward your own agenda. Will of parents and students in your county be damned? To continue to marginalize groups you don't believe exist regardless of evidence to the contrary. Do your recommendations come from a place of fear, from a place of concern for students, or from a place of self-righteousness that you know what's best for our children? Or is it you align with the EO and support bullies and violence in schools, support exclusion, hate, and dismissal of human beings? When the next EO threat is, "Funding will be cut if math and science classes are not limited for girls, so they will focus on home economics and childcare," will you support it? When the next EO states, "Women shouldn't be on the school board or in areas of leadership. If they care so much about students, they should be at home taking care of their own," will you support it? When an EO rolls out excluding anyone over 55 years of age and being on the board since your children are grown, and when you get past a certain age, exhaustion and confusion ensues and it's difficult to make sound decisions, will you support it? Or do you only support the dictates of this regime that did not affect you personally? It shouldn't have to happen to you to matter to you. You're here to represent all of us. You're here to show empathy to experiences that are not your own. Do not bow down and freely give away your power to their baseless illegal threats. It will not stop at LGBTQ+ and immigrants. They are coming for you next. And if that is not enough, please remember, "I was only following orders" was rejected as a defense of the Nuremberg Trials. Be better.
My name is Rachel Dole. I'm a parent and a pastor in Wilmington. Think of a time when you have injured your dominant hand, the hand that you write with, brush your teeth with, all the things. While you are recovering, you function awkwardly, but every moment of every activity feels harder, more frustrating, exhausting. Now add on to that layers of shame put on you by your community, grief at relationships lost because of this part of who you are. I've heard trying to live life as a straight person when you are not feels a little like always having to use the wrong hand, always wearing clothes that don't quite fit just to make others feel comfortable. In the latest Gallup poll, 9.3% of the US population identifies as LGBTQ. That is almost one in every 10 people. Think about the damage you are doing to the entire population of New Hanover County when you try to silence a tenth of our community. That affects every classroom, every family, every business. The queer community has always been a part of every population, and it will continue to be. When you make it unsafe for them to be honest about who they are, they don't stop being queer, but they can't share their gifts or live their life to the fullest. We all suffer when that happens. According to Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, when a child feels unsafe, their brain cannot learn. When one child is made to feel unsafe in a classroom, the climate of the classroom changes, everyone feels it. These are our children. They are the present and the future of New Hanover County. We all deserve for them to be treated with respect and made to feel safe. Our future and our present depend on it.
Hi, I'm Dr. Cindy Pearson. I'm a board-certified OB-GYN. I've been in practice for over 20 years. I think I've probably delivered a few babies from this group in here. I'm here to talk about the abstinence-only potential policy, which I think is going to be a huge, or would be a huge detriment to our kids. I can't tell you the number of children I see, or young girls, who could have benefited maybe from even more instruction on sex ed, the amount of chlamydia, the amount of gonorrhea, the, I mean, I've had, I have so many examples, I can't say all of them, and I don't have it all prepared. I mean, when I was in residency, I saw a 12-year-old, you know, taught abstinence-only, went on a church retreat. Her pastor's, the pastor's son impregnated her. So when she was 12, I got to deliver her baby while she's clutching a teddy bear. The number of girls that come in and their moms are like, "Oh, she tells me everything. I know she's not had sex." I'm like, "Okay, can you leave the room?" And when you ask the girl, they're like, "Oh, yeah, I'm 15. Yes, I've had three or four partners, but my mom doesn't know." We all want our kids, we all want the best for our kids. We want them to practice abstinence-only up to a certain point, but the reality is, that's not what they're doing. They are having sex. We need to protect them by giving them the knowledge of what happens when you have sex. What happens? How do you get pregnant? How do you get chlamydia? How do you get gonorrhea? How do you get warts? Yes, you can get herpes on your genitals when somebody gives you oral sex and they have a history of fever blisters. I just encountered that the other day. This is all the stuff that they need to know. This is all the stuff that they need to know, and they need to know more of, so that we can help prevent it, and abstinence-only is not going to...
My name is Amanda Riesmeier. I'm a board-certified and licensed behavior analyst and a doctoral student, but my most important title I've ever had was being a Title I Special Education teacher. This is my first time speaking to you all tonight, but I have a funny feeling it won't be the last. As a behavior analyst and researcher, I understand that data is important. In fact, I think everybody here can agree to that. It's a powerful tool and can inform your policy decisions. In fact, it should. All data is significantly relevant when it's directly related to policies that are under consideration. Having less than 20 K-2 students receiving out-of-school suspensions is significantly relevant if you're monitoring out-of-school suspensions of five, six, and seven-year-olds. Data already shows that New Hanover County has a long history of suspending its students. As recently as 2018 to current date, our schools were sanctioned for disproportionately suspending Black special education students at a rate of 4.5 times more than their white peers. Simply put, the public has a right to this suspension data that you've been collecting. Now, General Statute 132.1 states that public records and public information compiled by agencies of North Carolina government, as well as its subdivisions, are property of the people. And Statute 132.6 states, "No request to inspect, examine, or obtain copies of public records shall be denied on the grounds of confidential information being commingled with the requested non-confidential information." You can, of course, please, remove the confidential information. You've shared some of the K-2 data, but now it's time to share all K through 12 suspension data from the first half of this entire school year. Thank you for your time, and I hope, as you've all pledged when taking office, you stand by every child in our community at large. Thank you.
Dr. Jamie Pond?
I have a speech prepared, but I also want to just put a shout out to my colleagues out in the audience who've been talking about this same theme, because I think y'all hopefully are getting the message. Tonight I'll be speaking about the importance of comprehensive sex education in our public schools, and more importantly, a parent's ability to choose what program is best for their child. As of right now, New Hanover County parents can choose to select Stepping Stones, a comprehensive sex education medically accurate program, or My Life, an abstinence-only program that is religiously based. Research shows that comprehensive programs like Stepping Stones are more effective than abstinence-only programs at reducing teen pregnancy rates, increasing con abuse, and delaying the start of sexual activity. These programs also reduce homophobia, homophobic bullying in schools, they increase students' understanding of gender, gender norms, they support healthy relationships, they reduce dating and relationship violence, and they support the prevention of child sex abuse. Sorry, child sex abuse. Not only this, but comprehensive programs are widely popular. 72% of parents and junior high school students, and 65% of parents of high school students agree that federal government funding should be used to fund more comprehensive sex education programs that include information on how to obtain and use condoms and other contraceptives, instead of funding programs that have abstaining from sexual activity only. I wanted to discuss all of this tonight because I know you've been concerned about gender identity being discussed in the program. Remember, districts, not the federal government, have a say over what they want in their sex education programs. I echo several of my peers' thoughts tonight, and I want to encourage you to keep Stepping Stones and New Hanover County Sex Education Program the way it is. Let parents decide for themselves and their families what is right for their kids. Thank you.
Kamia Keith?
The third edition of The Champ's book has as its subtitle, "A Proactive and Positive Approach to Classroom Management." So it should come as no surprise that the phrase "out-of-school suspension" does not appear in any of its 590 pages. That said, it does have two paragraphs on the topic of removal from the class session. It says in part, "Removal from class will not work for students who are unable to demonstrate the expected behavior because they don't understand the expectations, are unaware they are exhibiting misbehavior, or currently lack skills to demonstrate expected behavior. It also has the potential to demonstrate to some students that they are not a valued member of the class community." Finally, "Students who are removed from class often fall further behind. This can lead to a cycle of misbehavior due to confusion, frustration, and leading to further exclusion." In another part of the book, it says, "Disruptive behavior should not involve removing a student from class unless it is so severe that there is a loss of instructional control. Sometimes the child needs to go to a different room with a highly qualified certified teacher so that they can continue their learning." I'm asking you to budget for more counselors and social workers who will help our youngest learners with their social and emotional skills. Let's get our children off to a good start.
Thank you. Lovell Hill?
My name is Lovell Hill. This is my first time speaking to the board. Regulation 4302-R, Rules for Use of Secclusion and Restraint in Schools, states, "Secclusion means the confinement of a student alone in an enclosed space from which the student is (a) physically prevented from leaving by locking hardware or other means, or (b) incapable of leaving due to physical or intellectual capacity. Physical restraint means the use of physical force to restrict the free movement of all or a part of a student's body. Mechanical restraint means the use of any device or material attached or adjacent to a student's body that restricts freedom of movement or normal access to any portion of the student's body and that the student cannot easily remove." Secclusion and physical and mechanical restraints were used hundreds of times in recent years, and they were primarily used on special education children in the elementary schools. My question is, are they still being used, and to what extent? I hope The Champ's approach and the reframing behavior program will help reduce the use of seclusion and restraints. Looking at behavior through a neuroscience lens and understanding that many behaviors are the result of an activation of a person's stress response system will help all children to learn and strive. Secclusion and restraint are not the answer in our public schools, and can be harmful and are considered ineffective. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Espe?
My name's Lisa Espe. I'm a proud school counselor in New Hanover County Schools, but I'm also the Vice President of the New Hanover County Association of Educators. The beautiful thing about our union is not only do we represent teachers, but we have a lot of certified and classified employees. Teacher assistants, bus drivers, maintenance workers are with us. One of the things that we really want to advocate for is, we've done a wonderful job of teacher voice, but even tonight, when someone was recognized from TRASC, she wasn't able to attend. Many of our teaching assistants, bus drivers, custodians, they're either still working or they're at a second job. So being able to come to this podium is a privilege that they don't have. We want to work with the board and find a way that we can continue to increase teacher voice and staff voice. One of the things that's been appreciated, I'm a member of your district, and in the workrooms, teachers have been impressed with the fact that there's been more transparency with budget presentations, the fact that the superintendent did a tour of the area to go around and talk to people. We appreciate that, and we want more of that. There are lots of problems and issues going on, and as you can see, we have a community that cares. We know that only having 20 or so people speak on these forums isn't enough, and we want to be more proactive and problem-solve-based. Not just come in and complain, but sit down and give you information on the perspective from what it's like and our thoughts. So I will be emailing everybody to provide my contact information. I would love to be able to set something up where we could work on increasing proactivity and being able to share personal stories so you can understand and make decisions, not just from your expertise, but from the people who are actually in the building with the kids and their situations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Peter Walwitch?
Of the 29 K-2 suspensions from the first half of the school year, 22 were for assaults. The Student Code of Conduct defines an assault as "an act of such nature to excite a reasonable apprehension of harmful or offensive physical contact with another person who is also a student and without the use of a weapon or causing serious injury." In other words, if an adult sees two children, and they are fearful that there might be physical contact between them, and there's no weapon, no serious injury, a five, six, or seven-year-old can be suspended from school. By this definition, one child doesn't even have to touch the other child to be kicked out of school. And the key phrase here is "reasonable apprehension." And when it comes to fear, or what someone fears, it's subjective. Any five, six, or seven-year-old that's acting in a way that makes people apprehensive probably needs help, counseling, and support, not the removal from school. Denying them access to our professional teachers, counselors, and social workers is just cruel. And with all the new training that's in progress, and the anticipated application of neuroscience in our schools, the Code of Conduct is due for a major update. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Clark?
The preamble of our North Carolina Constitution begins with acknowledgement of Almighty God. "We, the people of the state of North Carolina, grateful to Almighty God, the sovereign ruler of nations, for the preservation of the American Union and the existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties, acknowledging Him for the continuance of those blessings to us and our posterity, for the more certain security and for the better government of this state. I pray that each of you honor the Living Word, the King of all the universe, full of glory, the only God who is worthy of the highest honors throughout all of time. Trust in the Lord completely, and do not rely on your own opinions. With all your heart, rely on Him to guide you, and He will lead you in every decision. I pray over you, an understanding heart, so you compassionately know and obey the truth. As you battle for our children, the Lord's commandments are your counselors, that you set your heart on His precepts and pay close attention to all His ways. Let your life be shaped by integrity with truth written upon your heart. That's how you will find favor and understanding with God and men, and you will gain the reputation of living life well. Now may the Lord of Peace pour into you, His peace in every circumstance, in every possible way. The Lord's tangible presence be with you, in Jesus' name. Amen."
Thank you. Going back through, those were absent Rob Mayers, I know you said he's sick, Mr. Hollick, his name, Loretta Stackhouse, also sick, Chris Sutton, Janet Williams, Natasha Two?
It's been a while since I've seen everyone's faces. Happy March. I'm here to commend the board members who voted to remove all the diversity, equity, and inclusion, references from the district's strategic plan, policies, and procedures in accordance with the federal directive. I would also like to express my complete support of the board adopting the My Life curriculum as the opt-in program for parents and students in grades six through eight, and removing all non-heterosexual sex education from the family life training for the kids. Maybe I should focus my attention this way. Would you like that? Let me say really loud, for the past five years, in every school board meeting, liberal-leaning residents have repeatedly and rudely, I would say, encouraged this board and other members of the community to trust the experts and trust the subject matter experts when it comes to curriculum matters. Yet when they're advised by the very staff and those subject matter experts to adopt a sexual education curriculum that promotes abstinence as the best way to prevent pregnancy instead of promoting various alternative lifestyles and abortion as a contraceptive method, these same community members throw a temper tantrum. This is abject hypocrisy and another example of a two-tiered policy. At a time when the Hanover County School District is contending with a serious budget deficit, are they not concerned with the risk of losing $10 million of federal funding? I hope the members of this board, as well as our new superintendent, congratulations, Dr. Barnes, I hope you are concerned, as I am, about the possibility of losing $10 million in federal funding. I encourage each of you to stand firm and hold the line...
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We will have order. This concludes the call to audience. We are going to take a five-minute restroom break. Please come back to the DIAS board members at 6:32. Please come back to the dais, board members, at 6:32. Board members, if you would please return to the dais. Board members, if you would please return to the dais. Board members, please return to the dais. All right. All right. We are back in session. As we continue on in the agenda, we have a financial wellness review report. And that is presented by Mr. Aaron Bowyer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Barnes. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. You have a copy of the report in your materials. Just going to touch on some of the highlights, some of the work that was performed, some of the recommendations, and go from there. So, if you have any questions, feel free to ask me at any time during the presentation. I will be very brief, respect your time. One, I want to applaud the board for taking the opportunity to have an independent review done of your current financial operations across the district. Most times districts go through change and they're really not sure what their current situation is. So, I've worked with a lot of school boards across not only North Carolina, South Carolina, across the southeast, really working with them on some smart budgeting. So, we have a lot of experience. I apologize on behalf of my partner, Rassie Atkins. She wishes she could be here with us tonight, but she just recently has taken a job as the interim HR Director in Philadelphia Public Schools. So, she's not able to be with us here tonight. She's serving in that capacity for the next three months. Hopefully, I'll be able to pitch hit adequately for her part of this process. School Operations Specialist is an independent group of former school employees that brings content area expertise to some of the areas that were reviewed. We don't have all the answers. We take best practices that are used not only across the state, but in different parts of the country, and we help districts apply them to how their structures and their processes and procedures work. What makes our evaluation successful? One, we have the time to evaluate. So, we thoroughly look at how you're doing your work, what you're doing, and are able to give our opinions based upon that. As I've said, we have expertise in different areas. We have people that have been very successful, worked not only at the K-12 level, worked at the higher ed level, have been very successful in moving school district operations. And one, we take a lot of pride in being very objective in this process. We know oftentimes we don't get to deliver the news that sometimes districts want to hear, but we're very honest, transparent, and very open about what we've seen and what we evaluate within the district. The scope of our work was to evaluate the budget process and also to enhance some smart budgeting techniques, review of state, local, and federal maximization of funds, review and analysis of some of your operational efficiency, provide initial financial wellness assessment with findings, conduct review of staffing and allotment plans to ensure the maximization of resources, and review position control procedures. In light, what does that mean? We're here to really tell you whether you have the structures in place in order to focus your time and energy on things outside of the operational area. Hopefully, you've read the report, but I'm going to hit on a number of the highlights and then make some concluding comments. As far as the financial area goes, I think you all are off to some great starts, not only this year, but hopefully in the future, of enhancing your budget process. People want to think budget is a spring activity. It's a year-round activity. It never stops. You've got the closing of school, the opening of school, your numbers that come with enrollment each and every year. But again, you've taken adequate steps, you have a very thorough budget calendar. I think you should be applauded in a number of things, but you have very thorough budget documents that are very comprehensive to providing the detail of the information that a district needs in order to make decisions. You've had clean audits. That speaks to the compliance issues, all the issues in spending your funds appropriately, how your books are in order. Having a clean audit is a very, very important step in the process. We've looked again at the maximization piece. Overall, you're doing an outstanding job. We made recommendations that we do believe are going to allow you all to make some additional savings with some of your state dollars and your state resources, and those same capabilities with those decisions should be able to be done for multiple years to come. So, it's not one-time savings. Hopefully, it's savings that can accumulate over time where you'll be able to do the same things in order to provide that maximization. You're going to hear this mentioned a lot during this report, but you have probably as good of position control as we've seen anywhere across the state. That has allowed you the structure, unfortunately, to have made the cuts you made over the last couple of years, but you have excellent position control, excellent communication between finance and HR. And we can tell you, and again, we're very transparent, but that does not happen and that does not exist in a lot of districts across the state of North Carolina. Financed officers, HR directors, right now, they're a commodity that's hard to find. Having people in place that are doing a good job really allows you, again, to focus on what's important. We reconciled over 450 positions that were in your payroll assignment. That means actually people being paid that are no longer there. That's probably some of the most drastic numbers we've ever seen done in that period of time. Again, we're not here to speak to how that may have come about in the past. We're just here to really state where is your financial situation as it currently exists. But again, you deserve a lot of credit for having taken the necessary steps in order to have a sound financial structure in place. Along those same lines, I caution you in the financial area to know that your fund balance in your local general expense fund has dipped to a level that would probably be deemed a little bit low or unacceptable for a district this size. I know you have an arrangement with your county that will fund certain things in lieu of a storm, but a $1.3 million general expense fund balance for a district this size with a budget this size is getting to a point where you're very dependent upon someone bailing you out of situations should they occur, some of the unknown issues with the federal funding in the future. All those things combined, you've taken great steps, but a $1.3 million fund balance, again, is a little bit low. You did, you were very successful in doing what most districts did. You grew your special revenue fund balance over the last couple of years because you had additional indirect costs coming in from your federal funds. So, that sets you up for a little bit of a lapse in time where you can utilize some of those resources should you need those. But a lot of those resources and those funds are restricted. They come in associated with Medicaid funds, different things that are restricted revenues. So, it's not as flexible as within the local general expense fund. We'll speak a little bit more briefly about the work of your child nutrition because that's one of the departments we reviewed, but you should be applauding yourself that have had a negative $3 million net position just over three years ago to having a net position in child nutrition of almost $4 million as it exists now. Your current director does an outstanding job. Again, we'll speak to some of the things within child nutrition, but that, again, allows you to be financially prudent in that you can charge indirect cost to that program, you're not having to subsidize that locally, you can make decisions. That's an enterprise fund, that's one that literally doesn't try to make money, but becomes profitable in order to then benefit the district in other ways and provide a more stable program. In the human resources area, again, we reviewed all processes and procedures, position summary and change reconciliation goes on routinely. That's a wonderful step. You're not waiting till the end of the year, you're not basing everything on the start of the year. There's constant checks and balances that take place throughout the year. I think this is going to come of no surprise to the board, but with your declining ADM, with some of your numbers, possibly in time, there has to be proper adequate steps looked at to is school consolidation a choice? School consolidation comes with issues. It has to be matched with possible construction options, opportunities around the community to make that work as far as distances, busing, all the things associated with that. But you all know it, you review numbers annually. Most of North Carolina, unfortunately, are declining ADMs. A lot of the urban areas are declining ADM. Even the largest school district in the state, which grew by 65,000 students prior to 2015, has grown by less than 3,000 students in the last five years. So, the numbers are taking place consistently across the state in a lot of the same areas, so on and so forth. Again, we cannot speak highly enough about the wonderful collaboration that goes on and the strong systems that exist within HR. We sampled seven school allotment sheets, we reconciled the position cuts not only for the current year, but the previous years, and you all know that. You've gotten very lean. And when you get lean, you have to continue to evaluate yourself on an annual basis, but you can only go so deep in that process or you really do start to lose the ability to deliver the quality education that most districts want across the board. And again, we spoke to the position control. My partner, again, I thought had the best practices in the state. She's implemented her procedures in probably over a dozen districts, and her exact words were she's never seen it as thorough as it is here. And that, again, should be applauded on the surface for the great work that was done and the amount of work that goes into creating those documents. In the area of child nutrition, you have excellent procedures, you have an excellent procedure manual. Sounds very simple, but again, there's a lot of compliance that goes on with serving school lunches to students. So, having those things in place, again, allows them to address their attention to the important issues. We spoke to a strong net position that gives you good financial stability within that program that a lot of districts across the state are having to subsidize their child nutrition programs through their local general expense fund. So, by having that at that level, again, you're benefiting not only the district, but your county commissioners, the need for those resources across the board. The person that did our review does state reviews all over the state, but says excellent USDA compliance. So, again, very much attributed to the strong leadership and the management of that department. We did make some recommendations around staffing. Oftentimes, we size things that, we say that you have to right-size the district, and that doesn't mean it stays in that same mentality forever. But currently, you pay schools differently than we would recommend. Probably as far as the number of students, it's how many people participate in the program. Because the more people participate in the program usually associates with the more amount of work that goes on within the lunch program, so on and so forth. So, we made some recommendations in the report, we made some suggestions of how the salary could match in those areas. But again, the classified areas across the board have gone up drastically in the state, which they should, but maintaining those, being self-sufficient, funding the living wages and all those becomes much and much more costly to the district. Transportation, same thing, and again, I feel like I'm a broken record in this, and again, it's our job to really look objectively, but your transportation is one of the few districts in the state that receives 100% efficiency from the state on their funding. That means you get the maximum amount of state resources you can get from the state. Lot of districts, the state average, I believe, is about 84%. So, if you're not getting 16% of your state funds for those programs, then you're having to make that up locally. So, again, being at 100% is extremely beneficial to the district. Along with that, you have very strong management in place, a very unique background, appears to be working out very successfully in running the transportation program. We don't see many people move over from HR to run transportation, but our transportation expert, who, again, works all over the country in different aspects, spoke as highly of your team of leadership over there for their transition, their procedures manual, how they handle discipline, how they manage their fleet, different processes and things they have in place. Exceptional Children's is the one area, and I think if you read into the report, I'll name Ms. Alicia Tate, who does work across the entire state, works at the higher ed level, did our EC review. She couldn't, again, speak highly of how dedicated your staff is, but you know it. You've made a number of cuts to the EC program, and there's a lot of needs that go into the serving the EC population. And you're at a borderline that has to be monitored and has to be, you know, watched, that you have to be compliant, but you can only push your staff so far to deliver the necessary services. So, we've documented some of those in the report. Again, you had to do what you had to do in order to bring about a balanced budget. Exceptional programs, services come at a cost, a very worthwhile cost, but something you have to constantly review between your federal, state funds, receiving your Medicaid funds, all those kind of things. But it is our observation that you've gotten a little bit lean in that area. You're pushing not only school staff, but administration a little bit to the max on managing that program- managing that program with the number of kids being served across the board. Some of our overall findings are, again, the structure around process and procedures are in place for success. It doesn't mean you let off the pedal. Seen too many districts that get too comfortable and all of a sudden it gets to put to the back burner. But right now, you have, you have righted the ship, you have right-sized the district. And that's very important because you have to work with the resources that you have available. You have excellent protocol, procedures, process, some of the best we've seen. You're currently in a fairly strong financial place as far as a balanced budget, but you do have to be cautious about your local current expense fund balance. There's no ability to rely on that to cover any kind of reoccurring cost. It's actually very low to cover even one-time issues. Budget is something that always has to be evaluated. Your staff does an excellent job with their amendments, providing the resolution, providing those documents that are online. We actually know of a lot of districts across the state that use your budget documents as a model for what they want their budget documents to look like. So again, a lot of credibility needs to go into that process that people always want more when it comes to budget, but it really is a science of presenting concise, important data around that material. And even, I forget what page it is in your book, but you summarize all your positions, what funding source they're paid from, and even that summary report shows the people that have, the positions that have been cut over the last three years, where, what the funding source is. And again, that's extremely valued. We'll have that documented across the board. You know you're managing declining ADM. That comes with challenges. Even with nothing else said, the new state model of funding you on the prior year second month ADM has you having to cut people again this school year. So you have to always be on your toes. You always have to have your A-game available that you're managing by the numbers. Hopefully you grow, but you can ask any district that grew this year. They didn't get their growth money till almost December, and it was in question. Legislators had to come back and approve a special appropriation in order to put growth money back in the budget. So again, it gives you some stability to move forward, but again, if you do happen to rebound or you go down, there's a year-by-year effect. And you're, you're dealing with charter schools. You know, none of us know the impact of the voucher issues, but those things have a definite impact. We spoke to the excellent collaboration between finance and HR. Again, you've made significant progress to right-size the district with the resources that are available. Probably our last and final statement is the district has positioned itself to focus on student learning, and all indications are the current leadership is providing a student-first system. And I can't tell you how many times we don't see that. We see things that are almost adult-driven, program-driven by the district. You have really centered yourself around student-first learning with your budget showing those priorities within your budget. So again, I can't tell you that we don't normally get to deliver this kind of message. Most times, we stand between, before school boards and tell them all the deficiencies they have, but you should be very, very proud of yourself in these areas that, again, keep, need constant monitoring. But with all of our expertise and evaluation, our overall opinion was the things that we looked at across the board were in excellent shape. So glad to answer any questions, provide any additional information you'd like.
Mr. Wilber?
Very comprehensive document. It's very important to us. I would like to take just a second to thank our superintendent and senior staff and their teams. Because obviously, when you hear a glowing report about y'all's great jobs, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you all do, what you do. Thank you all and your teams. What I'm hearing, the biggest concern you have is our fund balance. I mean, I heard that about seven different times in your presentation that, you know, we should have enough money in our fund balance. Even with that document, that MOU with our county commissioner, we feel like we still need more money than that.
I mean, again, in our review of that, that's basically storm-related, for them to bail you out in case of a storm. You'll hear this question, and I'm sure you've heard it at school board trainings and NCASA trainings. Everyone wants to know what is, what is the appropriate amount of fund balance? Local government commission will not identify for school districts. They will for county governments. You know, they have to acquire debt, so on and so forth. But $1.3 million, I mean, you could have a roof issue that's not storm-related. You could have boiler-chiller issues. And I'm not putting it all in the maintenance area. You could have additional identification of EC children that weren't in your headcount that you're not being funded for. You're above the cap. You're, you're just bordering on that 1.3 does not allow you all, I mean, most districts of this size, I mean, you had a $12 million fund balance in local current expense three years ago. You know, that is probably more in tune with the size of your budget in a district of the resources you should have. And again, you dealt with your needs. You came off the yes, sir. You've righted the ship. That's just one area. The only other area of concern that we kind of had was, again, the leanness within the exceptional children's program, that you have to be compliant, and that's a fine line you have to walk as far as the resources available, the delivery of services. But again, your staff and your management is doing a great job with what they have.
Thank you. So we are nearing our cutoff time, so I'm going to make a motion to extend time for 10 minutes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. So next is Ms. Barnhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, and I'm going to echo my colleague's sentiment of thank you to the staff for the fabulous job that we're hearing from this report. That, the EC program is an area that the board has also heard that same feedback. And so that's one of the legislative items that we have put on our legislative agenda because the state has proposed a tiered system model. And Ms. Barnum, please correct me if I'm not saying this properly, but if, if that were to pass, New Hanover County schools would receive more funding for EC program because we have such intense needs. And she touched on that a few weeks ago with the assistant nurses and things like that. So it's a good acknowledgement because even from when we're having those conversations, we can bring this report in to say, and this, not only is it a concern of ours, but it's we're seeing that this is an area we have room to grow in. And the, my second question would be, do you have a format when you're looking for what the fund balance ideal mix looks like? That, I mean, I know Sutton and I have had conversations about potentially a policy or what that number is, but any, any format that we could consider as a board, I'd love to be passed along to us.
I mean, there's, there's districts that have policies around how much should they try to maintain in fund balance. You know, Ashley's outstanding expert in almost all the areas across the board. But again, there's uncertainty in the federal funding moving forward. You know, certain times you may have to, if your federal funds haven't been approved. But most times, the overall consensus is somewhere between 4% and 8% should be maintained in local current expense fund balance. Auditors usually echo that same opinion. County governments have to keep between 8% and 25%. But usually between 4% and 8% of your local current expense budget is the recommended amount. And then sometimes people say three months' worth of local operating revenue should you have to pay utility bills, cover any kind of expenses, so on and so forth.
Ms. Bradford?
Thank you, Erin. And I want to thank Dr. Barnes and the staff because I know when this proposal first came up, you were a little nervous. Was this a witch hunt? No, it was a wellness check. And you guys have just soared above the accolades that he's seen anywhere. And we're really proud of you. Thank you. Now, I would direct your attention to page 21 because this is going back to, and 22, back to EC. And EC request last year was high priority for us. And here it is on paper for us to use to see if we can't do something about that. Because this is pretty dire in this section. It's got me, you know, when I read it two weeks ago, it was alarming. And we started, as Ms. Barnhart said, we started, but it's a, it's an uphill deal. And we're blessed that people bring their students to our county because we offer such exceptional services. But we're not blessed because we don't have the money to cover all of it because of the disproportionality of the financing. And so for me, I'm going to want to see that be a super, a super priority for the rest of this year until we can get some movement there. And other than that, I'm just thrilled. Thank you very much.
Dr. Merrick?
Erin, that's a lot of work. Thank you. And I, and I appreciate the, both the accolades and the very gentle nudges that you are giving us. I want to parrot what has already been said because it can't be said enough. Ms. Sutton, you and your staff, the whole team, who was that guy that used to be the head of HR?
Oh, right, yeah. Well, this guy.
All it took was getting a smart person over there in HR. You guys are good.
But, I mean, it does, it does warrant being said again and again. Thank you for all that hard work. But the thing I'm really getting from you is, based on the resources available, we've been doing a good job. And you kind of hint that the quality of education in certain places is, you know, at risk. And, and I agree with my colleague here that EC is just a place that we cannot continue underfunding and under, underperforming. I want to give a shout-out to the public because they came to this board again and again and again last year when we were looking at all the cuts that might happen to EC. And so I think they deserve a little bit of acknowledgement for keeping on top of things and for bringing those concerns. And I really do hope that we will work really hard as we, you know, I even see that our, our budget conversations shifting a little bit the next time we meet because I think this has to be addressed. And the last question I have for you is, will you go and tell the county commissioners how well?
One comment I'll make very briefly is, you speak exactly to it. You right-size to what resources you have available. Public education's on a crossroads right now, and its ability to be successful with all the choice, all the options that are out there, we're, we're watering it down to some degree because the resources don't allow for the additional services across the board. But again, that aside, you all have put yourself in good financial standing with what you have, with what you've done to be successful.
All right. Mr. Perry?
that grows their fund balance is their inability to find people. Lap salaries is really the only creator of anything significant. The cost of inflation, the cost of doing business, the cost of all materials across the board really are exhausting the increases that districts are getting. So you don't sit in any isolated situation in that area. It doesn't mean that you won't have some things come in. An appropriate budget in any system should be somewhere between 94% and 96% spent out. If you're in the 80s, then you're probably putting too much money into a fund balance on an annual basis. But usually at 94% to 96%, you're not sweating out every purchase, every dollar, trying to get to year-end, wondering are you going to make it? So, you know, I hope you fill your positions because I'll trade off having a educator in front of children as opposed to accumulating the dollars. But unfortunately, with the challenges that exist across the state right now in finding quality teachers, unfortunately, that's probably the, the main driver of changing the fund balance situation. You know, there's some bills being proposed, but they have to be voted on and approved. We'll all see.
Dr. Barnes?
Just a couple of points. I think for our issue, and I'm going to give you one specific example, this year, we took all of what would be allocated teacher assistance for our regular third-grade classrooms and gave them over to be TAs to the special ed simply because there wasn't enough money to get the job done. Some of the concern about not having a fund balance is our inability to pivot and adjust and do short-term emergency things that we normally would have been able to do. I will say that for the fund balance, the first step towards building a fund balance is to stop spending it. And so this year, we have done that. So at least we have stopped the bleeding this year. I will say that over the last three or four years, our time from posting a job to filling a job has gone from 45 days to 20. So what ordinarily would be a larger amount of lap salaries, we don't see as much here because we have such a supportive local funding for a very high, come on, stipend, local supplement. Thank you. Plus the fact that this is an area where people want to go, we're very well-known. So we don't get a chance to use our lap salaries to some extent either because we don't have as many vacancies as other places have. Are you going to give me another start? Thank you.
Rewarding ourselves. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Justice. You've got to close us out. We have about a minute left.
A minute left. Okay, just quickly then. And thank you. This was great. And thank you for whoever's idea was to have this done. I'd just been back recently. The EC situation, most of that funding would be coming, it should be coming from the federal government. They don't supply it as well as they should. Is that where the bulk of the funding would come from normally? How does normally EC departments funded?
There's some pass-through, but yes, state-funded and federally-funded. But the state funding majority is pass-through from the federal government in that funding formula. But it's capped at a certain percentage of students of your population. So again, those, those present challenges in itself. But it's a combination of state and federal funding right now. And then you get some, you file for what's called Medicaid reimbursement, fee-for-service outreach program. So it brings in a little bit of additional local revenue for those services you provide that the whole combination of, we all say it's putting a puzzle together in order to match the needs and the funding.
But Medicaid is integral to this functioning properly, correct? And that's a federal program, correct?
Yes.
All right. That ends our time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Continuing on, we have the Attorney General letter. Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And like I said, my fellow board members, this is just informational. I had reached out after we sent that letter to the Attorney General's office and heard nothing for a few weeks and was able to get an appointment last week. And so I took the opportunity to sit down with staff and just share our concerns that we have openly brought to the attention. And in his press release, they had thanked New Hanover County for sending the letter and bringing it to attention. So they reiterated that. But sitting around the table with just cabinet members, I said, moving forward, what does this look like? There's still a lot of frustration, and I know speaking with my colleagues, we see that of, we don't want this to happen again, and we want to make sure that moving forward, we are able to advocate for better change and what that looks like. And so while they could not speak to the legality of the case itself, they said they would keep us up to date whenever, whenever movement changed. But one of the discussions became around protocols and the response time. And so there are different privacy laws that could be updated. There are different terms, potentially an MOU that the DPI could utilize. Power school was a statewide contract. And so unfortunately, North Carolina is entirely affected. And so moving forward, as we just had conversations about the DPI letter, potentially, we can talk about different terms we'd like to see on the MOU, which ideas could include a variety of things. But one of the things that we brought up frustration was some of the data that was breached in New Hanover County dated back a long time ago of, of students and employees that are no longer part of our system. And so bringing that to the attention is potentially a good idea for DPI. And then different privacy laws that could change, obviously, at the legislature. And the other thing of discussion that came up, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm all over the place, was talking about the aggregated data versus the personal data and what can be changed with that. And so advocating for potentially that change on the DPI level. The other option that, being discussed that we can consider is advocating for maybe not having a statewide contract. I would love if my other colleagues that were able to have this conversation with me, if they have anything to add, but I think that's pretty much recap. I just wanted to share that out with the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we will have further discussion on the letter in a little bit, but that was just informational at this point. Continuing on, I will entertain a motion to approve the consensus items. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. I'm going to hand the baton over to our policy chair, Mr. Wilbur.
Here it is. Thank you. Okay. Just a brief, two brief, not brief, but two, two policies to bring forth. This was brought up. For-
This was brought forth by one of our colleagues here. If you look at the consensus items, 4320 Tobacco Products and 502672 Smoking and Tobacco Products, I think it's pretty straightforward in both of those policies. You know, we're expanding the policies to cover a lot more things than just tobacco, nicotine, and vaping products. But I think it is pretty straightforward, and I would make a motion that we accept these two.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Ms. Barnhart?
My apologies. I feel like this goes along the vein, potentially, just seeing the explosion of vaping in our schools, if potentially the conversation of having an ordinance of sorts that are around our school buildings to prohibit the sale of that and talk about, have that, open that dialogue with our county commissioners and things of how close in proximity to our schools are stores allowed to sell vaping and cigarettes and things like that. But I've heard, I've heard different ordinances have that conversations in other counties, and so I don't know if it's something that we'd like to potentially open the opportunity to consider and have that, if we're seeing this as an issue, which from feedback from staff, we are seeing major issues with that.
Okay. Ms. Justice?
Yeah, I'm not sure how practical that is in a county this size with 46 different schools. And if you've been around the schools, there's shops everywhere. That would be something that, that's also, that just complicates rules that don't necessarily, that alone will not stop, in my opinion. I have teenagers in my house, I know teenagers, I taught teenagers. And so that seems to be going a little bit far, especially some of the schools that are in areas that there's an awful lot of convenience stores, not just vape stores, all kinds of, I mean, you can't go to Walmart, they're everywhere. So, you know, that seems a little bit extreme and not practical considering, you know, our county. That's just my opinion.
Dr. Merrick?
I know that there are statewide initiatives to raise the age for vaping and tobacco products. And I just wanted to bring forward the voice of a parent in our district who lost a child, New Hanover High School child, to vaping. And I think that we do need to take this extremely seriously. And I know that she, because of the loss of her child, does programs all around the state to different school districts around helping the students to understand the danger of vaping. And it might be something that we would consider, taking a look at her program and seeing if it would fit in our high schools.
It's a good idea.
All right, so the motion to approve these two?
Just a clarification. Dr. Merrick had just asked for a quick clarification. This is consensus, so we can go ahead and move forward with this today. So just to make sure we can.
Perfect, all right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of passing Policy 4320 and 50267250 signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Carrying on to policies for second reading, we have Policy 6129. We actually heard today of a hero at Trask Middle School that was able to save a person's life that was choking. I mean, that was, you know, a hero. I mean, just unbelievable. With these devices, it might make it that much safer for our students. And so I think everybody is on board with this. This is the anti-choking device, putting one, you know, putting them, they were very nicely, or very wonderful, donated to our school system, putting them out in the schools. This is the policy that will help us be able to use them appropriately and effectively. So again, I make the motion that we accept Policy 6129.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thanks. Continuing on, an update on New Hanover High School. Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, give me a brief update.
Sorry, Mr. Anderson.
I like how he emphasizes these. Every time, it will be brief.
I get that a lot, too, don't worry.
It will be brief. I'm going to, similar to last month, just kind of break this into two parts, talk about the structural repairs and then a brief update on the facility assessment master planning process. I'm happy to report that the structural repairs are proceeding along on schedule. The most noticeable work that you'll observe on-site right now is the reconstruction of the east and west walls. You know, over the next couple of months, you're going to see those take form as we go into the month of March. Repairs along the southern elevation that runs parallel with Market Street will be underway. The vast majority of that work is going to be interior to the building, you won't really see it. And then this evening, you approved the change order for Phase 2B. Phase 2B is all work that's remaining, all scope of work remaining, to allow us to reoccupy the classrooms and offices for the 2526 school year. So that change order takes us from this point through August of this year. And that really sums up the progress that we've made over the past month. Moving on to the facility assessment master planning process. Last week, we had a fantastic week. On Thursday, we met with students and had kind of day-long sessions. Had about 400 students who participated in that. They came at different stages in the four blocks of that day, met with us in Princess Street Gym. We had a team of individuals who were distributed around five stations. And at each station, we were talking about different topics and getting information from the students on what's important to them and what they see as the needs for New Hanover High School as we go into the future. Teachers and staff were also invited. A number of teachers were accompanying their students and participated side-by-side with the students in that process. It was a thoroughly enjoyable day. I cannot emphasize enough how amazing the students were. It's a very impressive student body. They were engaged, they were articulate, they were so well-mannered. We really had a great time. Mr. Sutton did an excellent job of bringing in a cross-section of students that were representative of the different programs such as Lyceum, Stay, and Rise. So it was a really wonderful day. That evening, we had a community engagement session, and that was for parents, alumni, and community stakeholders. They participated at the same type of stations that the students did. So we not only got the information from the students and the teachers and the staff about the future of Hanover, but also from parents, alumni, and community stakeholders. So, and then also, we had a questionnaire that was distributed and that folks could either fill out on paper, and we collected, or there was a QR code they could scan. Mr. Sutton sent out a link to the students via email. That questionnaire is still open for participation. I know that Mr. Sutton is posting the QR code at the basketball games so we can further continue to gain participation from our community. But in a nutshell, that's a wrap-up of the update. I would like to note, though, I'd like to thank the advocates. They volunteered with us, with the students, and in the evening to help us organize them and appreciate their involvement and their support in the process. But I'd like to open up for any questions you may have.
Ms. Bradford?
Thank you for that report. Will we have access to the information that you gathered?
Yes, and thank you. I actually intended to note, so the design team is going to take that information. It's going to be a part of the report that they're developing. And again, the end of April is when that master planning and facility assessment report will be wrapped up. We're going to be utilizing that information to help drive and give direction to the master planning. Also, between now and the end of April, we hope to meet with the students, teachers, and staff again to be able to show them, hey, we heard what you said. This is, this is the information that we received from you, and this is how we translated that into a vision for the master plan. But you will be able to see all of that data that we gained from all of the folks that showed up last week.
Dr. Merrick?
Thank you. That was a wonderful event. I came for the community part, I wasn't able to see the kids there. But all the architects were raving about the intelligence, the great questions, the engagement, the politeness of our students. And I think that says a heck of a lot for Mr. Sutton, Dr. Sutton, and for all of us. And so I appreciate asking stakeholders, and I appreciate the process that you're going through. And I think getting buy-in from everybody is fantastic, so thank you very much.
Certainly.
Anyone else? Thank you. Oh, Ms. Justice, always, as soon as I have.
Well, I got lucky and got to have the tour by the advocates. That was wonderful last week. And one of the things that really shook me up was going into those office areas and seeing where they were holding up the walls with all the huge cracks that could have any time come down on the heads of any number of staff members and children. So I'm just, I was actually shocked at how bad a shape it had been and that nobody was injured over all those years. And I'm so glad now that we've got the funding to do this, to keep nothing else, you know, people alive and safe. It was really impressive.
It's very timely, and we are very appreciative of the support of the county to fund this work. It was much needed, and we're glad that we were able to do it.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you.
Moving on. We're going to start talking about Dane Britt. Ms. Justice, you brought this forward. We do have some information, yes, to share about that. So do you want me to start with Dr. Barnes?
Well, yes, because I was not sure, Dr. Barnes had said he was in contact with him, or where did you find out?
Yep, so I reached out to him Tuesday during agenda review, I was texting him. And so I touched base with him on Wednesday. He has sent his insurance information that, for my request to me. I've talked to both the superintendent in Pender and Brunswick. I know that Ashley has talked with the CFOs in both places as well. What I agree with Mr. Britt was, I said, listen, the next time you are doing a show locally, give me a call. I'd like to be able to go out with a couple of my folks, meet you, see the program, and then we can talk more. So we're just waiting for that.
That's probably a good place to leave it at this point because it needs to have a buy-in. I've already bought in because I know the effect that, he has had a positive effect for many years before the problem, which I still feel bad about because I don't think a problem should have arisen, about his performances. It was due to several individuals that actually are no longer in the situation. So we need to, I think, for the sake of the kids, because it is such a positive message. And he does, he's in Brunswick County, he's in Pender County. He does all kinds of shows, I think he even did the prom last year at Laney. And that wasn't, that wasn't the show he gives at the school. But, I mean, that's the type, the type of positive performer he is around our students. And so, yes, if you could, as soon as you could get a chance to do that and come back so we can make a decision in having him return.
Yep, just want to do my due diligence to see it for myself. Because I never have, so he's supposed to call me when the next time he does something. I'm going to jump, it's off.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to lay all the board members down, I'll jump over with the board.
I don't know about that, Ms. Bradford.
I was just wondering if the superintendent had any idea when that would be? Is it like, you're going to have to wait a half a year or a couple of months?
He said he would call me the next time he scheduled one. I said, I'll drive anywhere around the surrounding area.
But no clue on how frequently he does them?
He didn't give me a date when we spoke.
Ms. Barnhart?
I appreciate this, and this is something that I also would like for us to look into. I remember when the program stopped doing, and being on this side of the board, seeing all the insurance and liability issues, I see we've had to make a lot of changes. And so the fact that we're making steps that potentially could bring it back, I'm very excited for. So thank you for that.
Anyone else? All right. Let's keep going, Dr. Barnes, the Stepping Stones Family Life Curriculum.
So I sent the board, tried to send the board at 9:00 this morning, and then sent it again at 1:00 this afternoon because I know how it's sent, apparently. We sat down with a group of educators at your request to look at the Family Life Curriculum. And what is attached there and what you guys have read is sort of our recommendation. A couple of things we want to make sure that we remind everyone, and then I'm going to turn it over to Robin unless I miss something, okay? A couple of things that we have to remember, that all of the programs that we teach are required to follow state curriculum as well. The state curriculum is an abstinence-first program. And that there is a difference between abstinence-first and abstinence-only. So, but all of our programs teach abstinence first. So what our recommendation would be is that we believe that there is value in the Stepping Stones program. We believe there is value in comprehensive sexual education for all students. However, there are things that are in that curriculum that we would feel can be removed out and focus on the health benefits and the requirements that are in there. So what we've recommended, you can see there, and I'll speak to it if you want me to be more specific. There are four lessons, so let me go back a minute. Listening to the community, we got over 100 emails. And their focus was primarily on things about contraception, sexual health, dangers of STDs, dangers of human trafficking, dangers of sexual assault. Those were most of the letters that I got. Their primary concern was about those criteria, or those, those things. So what we would recommend is keeping our curriculum sort of the way it is, removing a total of only four lessons, one sixth grade, two seventh grade, and one eighth grade lessons, and keep everything else that's previously in Stepping Stones. This will allow us to provide the best comprehensive education we can and also respond to some of the concerns that were brought up last month, or last week, excuse me. So our other recommendation, and you can see the rest of these here, but the other recommendation is to leave things as they are this school year because we are already in process and make these changes to next year so it's a little less abrupt. The other question that we were suggesting, our staff's recommendation, is to change it from an opt-in program to an opt-out program to just make it more seamless. So that's, Rob, Mr. Hamilton, did I miss anything?
I think you got it all. And the four lessons that we are removing are not in our state standards, nor are they in general statute.
Mr. Wildebar?
Well, I was one of the folks that fought for it being an opt-in option simply because an opt-out, a lot of times what happens is that letter doesn't get home, and then your parents, oh, I never even know much I was going through that. So I think it is important to keep it as an opt-in program or have some way to document either way. But, I mean, we do need to have that documentation. You know, if they get a letter back and, you know, if we say opt-out and we say that everybody has to have a letter back that, you know, that says, no, I don't want to opt-out, you know, but I think that's clearly, you know, I'll be honest, I was in there when I was calling back in my teaching days, where we actually had to call parents and say, you know, do you want your child in to you, don't want your child in? I think that communication in some form or fashion is important. I think if it's just an opt-out program, what happens a lot of times is that we just don't get any communication at all.
Dr. Merrick?
Well, it's kind of two parts. I'll ask the question now, but I'll keep going. So I'm concerned about, I also spoke with the Family Life educators, and they made the same recommendations that perhaps those four lessons would be edited. So I understand that that's got buy-in, okay, and I appreciate that. But I'm wanting to know, what are those lessons that are being removed? Because I do know that the general public has been very much in favor of this program. I know that some of the triggers, I believe, that we're worried about is the idea of LGBTQ information coming into sex education. Between the executive orders and the Dear Colleague letters, the only thing that it discusses is gender identity, which is to say transsexualism. And as much as I would like to leave it in there, I bow and say, yes, I think probably it's safest for us to take those out. But to understand gay and lesbian relationships is also important for our children. I believe that opt-out is really important. We talk a lot about parents' rights. really important. We talk a lot about parents' rights. Nowhere do we ever get rights without responsibilities. So, if you've got a parent's right, we also have to make them responsible to opt-out. This is, with the sexual assault case and the agreement, we need to provide certain things. And it's, we have to leave it up to the parents to be responsible to say, "If I don't want my child to have this, I'm going to have to take the effort to opt-out."
Uh, Mr. Perry?
Um, the, this was for the Family Life recommendations, and the, which ones are being removed for Family Life, which ones are being removed in?
This would streamline, Robin, correct, you kept it wrong. This would streamline us to one program. If you opt-out, you would be responsible, the parents would be responsible for the entirety of the curriculum. So, it's opt-in, or it's that we would have one health education curriculum.
Presently with the Family Life, would you say that, is it, is it abstinence only now?
It's not Family Life.
Neither were abstinence only. They were-
Including Family Life.
Correct. They were both always abstinence first. Family Life did not go into as much detail about contraception and sexual health as Stepping Stones. In general statute 115C8130, it does say that each Board of Education shall adopt a policy and provide a mechanism to allow a parent or legal guardian to withdraw, to withdraw his child or her child from instruction required under subdivisions 10 through 13 of subsection A of this section.
I have one follow-up question.
Okay.
Contraceptive, did any of the contraceptive education part of the curriculum, as this too mentioned before, involve abortion as a form of contraception?
I've not seen that anywhere.
Uh, Ms. Justice?
Two things. I'll start with the opt-in, or opt-out. I just recently had my grandson go through this, and one of the things that went on was, and he did Stepping Stones, and one of the things that went on is I was constantly bombarded with, "Make sure you sign this. Get permission." We had emails, phone calls. I think I might have even gotten a text. I mean, the schools are very thorough in trying to contact the teachers, I mean, parents. And if the parents don't opt-out, they'll do the same thing with the opt-out, then as someone just said, it's on them. Because I know statistically, we're going to get a lot more kids involved if it's an opt-out than an opt-in. For example, our health program, with the, I'm just using that as an example, with the eye testing and the dental, oh, testing. We've had kids, the numbers have dropped down to 30% from like 80% because of the opt-in, opt-in problem, which to me is a huge problem, because these are kids that are desperately needed, and they're not getting it. So, I'd hate to see this with the sex education program, because it's the same thing. Unfortunately, even in this day and age, parents do not do the jobs that they should be, in my opinion. And so, this is a great way for kids to learn, and they come home and ask questions. Well, the parents should be talking to them, and they're very embarrassed. But this is a catalyst for that kind of discussion at home. Also, the section on what has been pulled out, it appears, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it is a section on the education or understanding about what the LGBTQ definition is, in order for our students to understand and recognize the different changes and different types of behaviors among humans, as, you know, the population is what it is. Is that what's been taken out?
To make it more transparent, Robin, or Dr. Hamilton, can you give us just a brief overview of those four lessons, please?
Yes, the four lessons, the one in sixth grade is Lesson 6-3, which is about gender roles. Seventh grade is 7-3 gender roles. Also in seventh grade, Lesson 7-4 LGBTQ+ and in eighth grade, Lesson 2 LGBTQ+.
So it is. All right. And this has been done, because we had this discussion, I believe it was during the Agenda Review. This was done in response to the Dear Colleague Letter, which I didn't see anything in there about that, but then the School Board Association passed down the information that maybe it'd be a good idea to just pull it out in case. And somebody during the Agenda Review said, "Well, if the School Board Association sends that, they're the most liberal..." No, I worked with the School Board Association for years. They're very conservative. So, that's why they were doing that. I'm very concerned about our kids' well-being. I, I can honestly say that I'm probably the only one up here that's worked with middle schools and teenage kids on, on the level, you have with the younger ones, on the, on the level of them developing into young adults and, and having to be with their peers and understand who they are, and our society's perceptions of what they are and their future. And I'm very concerned, because they need to learn reality, and this is reality, and it always has been. And for their safety's sake, when I was teaching in the 90s, I had several kids try to commit suicide because of the attitude of their peers in schools from ignorance. The less ignorance, the safer our kids are. And this is a safety issue. Bullying is a huge issue. It revolves around this topic, gender identification and roles. So, I, I really don't, I, I hate to see us be more fearful of a very vague and definitely not illegal, in my opinion, because I've also taught government and know how the Constitution works. But it's more than the vagueness and anything else, and we endanger our kids because we take this part out, out of fear from something that most experts actually are saying is not legal. So, that's, I know, we want to need the money, and this, that, and the other, but we don't even know how far that's going to go. It's all in court right now. So, this is my concern. I care about the kids. I care about their safety. I care about their self-perception and the way that they know, need to understand each other.
Okay. So, we've hit time. So, I'm going to make a motion to extend this for five minutes. Is that going to, we have three board members who have not spoken yet once. So, I will make a motion to extend the time for five minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Ms. Barnhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When this topic came up, I was asked a lot of abstinence only, and for me, I said, "I support the option of having an abstinence forward and having access to understanding contraceptions and diseases, sexually transmitted diseases." And so, that's important. So, I just want to read the topics of looking at the streamline of what those staff brought to us. Advantages of, excuse me, abstinence, assertive communication and refusal skills, available community resources, breast self-exam for girls only, childbirth and pregnancy, consequences of teen pregnancy, contraception, healthy communication and relationships slash dating, fetal development, friendship communication skills during conflicts, human reproduction, male and female reproduction system, media influence and online safety, parenting, parental involvement, peer pressure, physical changes of adolescence, self-esteem, sex trafficking, STDs, including HIV and AIDS, reporting sexual abuse and sexual harassment, technology and safety, and then testicular self-exam for boys only. The purpose of sex ed is to be informative in the process, in the hopes to prevent teen pregnancy, and in the event of sexual activity, that they are, students are as safe as possible. I do not like the idea of us encouraging students to have sex. I'm going to put that out there as well. I do support the idea of having it opt-in and understand the time commitment, but I did want to ask this, because I did not know if that was part of one of the discussions in the settlement, to have it an opt-in versus an opt-out. And I think that's important to know for my vote.
Mr. Blinter?
We took a quick look at the settlement, and I don't think, the fact that we're offering this stuff, by the way, I think satisfies us. We did want to stress, one of the reasons staff came up with that list that you're seeing is that contraception is required. It's mandated that we at least offer it. Now, parents do have the statutory right to opt-out, but we are required to offer contraception, STD prevention-
And I, and I see that in here. And so, I guess my follow-up to that is even parents who are enrolled in this course, if they say, "I want my child to be in this course," there is availability in our policies if a parent reached out and said, specifically in fetal development, for whatever reason, "That lesson I would like my child to sit out for." That is an option for a child taking this My Life suggested content, that parents still have access to do that, per our policies. Am I understanding that correctly?
Sure.
Okay, I think it is. I just want to make it clear.
I don't know that we've ever had specific-
I'm just giving an example, just in case it arises, that as far as if there's a lesson in curriculum that's not sex ed, it's my understanding we have a policy that if a parent requests an alternative assignment, if you will, that they have the right to reach out to, to the teacher and the principal, and that their child would have an alternative assignment in lieu of the assignment that is on the agenda, on the curriculum.
I think like in fifth grade, if parents didn't want their children to participate, then we did provide children with alternative assignments. And I think those things are worked out at the school level, on a case-by-case, because I'm not sure that happens that frequently for, especially if you opt-in, and then there's just one lesson you don't want your child to have. I'm not sure that I've ever run across somebody just saying, "Oh, I don't want this one." But I also don't think that anyone would argue with that. I think that, you know, staff would be happy to facilitate that.
And then my last-
I think, sorry, within reason, I think we can accommodate things like that.
Right. I just want to, I want the public to hear that. That's what I'm getting at.
Sure.
My last thing is, when we're talking about contraception, is distribution of contraception. I think someone spoke to it in the call to audience. I want to clarify this. We, as a school system, do not distribute contraception to students, condoms, things like that. We are not allowed to. It does not align with the general statute to do that. I know off-site, there are clinics that students can go to and partake in those, but on our school campuses, we do not distribute these materials. I just want to put that out there, too. Thank you.
All right. In order to ensure that all of the board members have an opportunity to speak, I am going to make a motion to extend the time for five more minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Ms. Bradford.
Okay. I move that we adopt Staff Recommendation 1 and Staff Recommendation 2 with the following changes. I move that we adopt Staff Recommendation number 1 and number 2 with the following changes, that we continue to be opt-in for both, and that we implement now, and that we go ahead and add to it a review of the other policy changes that were suggested in the North Carolina School Board Association recommendation that we got last Tuesday. In order to comply with the settlement and with the pressure on the federal funding, I move those two things now.
Do we, do I have a second for that?
One second.
Okay. I have not spoken. So, I would like to say something. This has been brought up a bunch, the opt-in versus the opt-out. I have always been a fan of opt-in, because as a busy mom, there are definitely papers that get lost. There are definitely emails that don't get read. There are definitely text messages that don't get seen. And I don't want, I want to make sure that our parents always have that, that choice, and so that it's not just, "Well, I didn't have it. I didn't see it. It was a really busy day. There was a lot going on." That's my concern. Yes, parents should be responsible, but we all have off days, and I think that we need to allow for our parents to have off days as well. I think it's, it's really important that we continue to provide that as an opt-in. Everybody has had one chance to speak. We have three minutes left. And a motion on the table. So, right now, if this is, we need to speak to the motion, we have three minutes. I believe actually, a while ago, Mr. Perry had his hand up, and then-
Guys, once that I'm for this motion, I want to give you, give me a second, and I'm more than often, and I appreciate the consideration by Ms. Barnhart that you say some of our traffic things, you may not want this to, to opt-out, to, to, you know, what the rest of it is. I believe we need to give it to them. I was, if I was to break it open, I think it's a great step forward, and I am more just rather than the motion to make this effective immediately. I don't want to take any chances that you would have given to hear that.
So, next time you speak, Mr. Perry, can you make sure your mic is on? Because I think that there are people out in the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
People out on the broadcast that cannot hear him. Dr. Merrick, can you finish it up? We got one minute.
Yes. Well, I object to the motion based on the fact that it's vague and unspecific. We know that the Dear Colleague letters and the executive orders are as clear as mud. And so, when you say, "I, I move that we go in line with the Dear Colleague Letter," it does not tell us what we're voting for. And so, I demand that the motion be specified.
Okay. Would you like me to repeat, Madam Chair? I would like you to, yes, please, Ms. Bradford, if you would repeat it.
We have a handout from the superintendent. It has two staff recommendations on it, in the middle of the page. Staff Recommendation number one, staff recommendation number two. Do you need me to read those, or?
Go for it. Go for it.
Okay. Staff Recommendation number one, switch to a single middle school Family Life education program. I'm offering a change here to beginning now, with the parents' ability to only opt-in. This program will be called Family Life. In other words, as I understand it, we're going to combine the things and rename it. That's how I understand it, Dr. Barnes. Correct me if I'm wrong. Keep fifth grade growth and changes as is, but, but not, but removing the opt-out model. Staff Recommendation number two, Policy Committee Updates Policy 34, 3540, Section B, to reflect a single middle school program titled Family Life. And I propose the change to add a review of the other policy suggestions that we got last week, and a handout from the North Carolina School Board Association. We all got those. We all discussed those last week. Send those to the Policy Committee and let them review them. That's, that's my motion. And Mr. Wildebar says they're already there, so.
Perfect. Okay, so there is a motion on the table. We have met our time. So, Ms., I'm going to repeat the motion. The motion is to move forward with Staff Recommendation 1 with the changes of beginning immediately, and the verbiage "opt-out" changed to "opt-in." And Staff Recommendation number 2 with the addition of adding the policy changes from NCSBA that we have recently received. Ms. Bowie, will you call the role for me?
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart? Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Dr. Merrick?
Nope.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah, aye.
And Mr. Wildebar?
Aye.
Oh, I have my mic off. I'm so sorry. Over to Ms. Barnhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really just want an opportunity for us to brainstorm together. I know some feedback was, some people liked having the letter beforehand, some didn't. So, this is just an opportunity for us to come together, to formulate the letter to DPI. We know that the state is moving towards infinite campus instead of power school. And so, what are some qualities and criterias that we'd like to see, potentially discussing what data that we are hoping that we are able to submit to the state? What can we keep? How long they're going to keep our data, things like that. And so, I will open the floor to discussion, take notes, and be able to formulate a letter to come back that we can adopt before the board.
Ms. Justice, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah. Why are we sending this letter just about this topic? We have our Department of Education that's been broken into, and all of our information is out there. is out there. Why don't we send it to the Attorney General and have him write a letter concerning what's going on with our Department of Ed information? I mean, I'm not going to go into Social Security because that's not education related. But the point is, if we're worried about our data being out there in the ether and owned by people that with nefarious intent possibly that we don't know, I think there's a lot bigger problem going on right now than just what's going on with this particular North Carolina possible contract down the line that involves security for people's private information. So why don't we do a letter along those lines?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bradford and then Mr. Perry.
I enjoyed the seriousness of the State Attorney General's office in our discussion with him last week, or them. I enjoyed the seriousness of how they're taking this. And Ms. Barnhart may have said this earlier, but it really hit me that North Carolina was probably the most affected state, but it affected every state in the nation. And we had this contract because it had been handed down from the state level and, and everybody in the state except for two schools that were both brand-new charter schools. And they had just come into the system so late that they just went with the one that's, that's now been slated for us to go with next. So I would want some breaks on the term there. I know that one of the gentlemen that spoke said something about, there's a couple of states that have really stringent restrictions on this type of vendor and, pardon me? Privacy laws, that's it. And I would, I would really like to go down that road. I'm not going to say I want this or that or whatever, but I want it to, I don't want to end up in this position again. We still aren't talking about what's happening at the federal level with that data breach. And I'm just really concerned about the safety of our data.
Okay. Mr. Perry?
Yes, I thank Ms. Barnhart for taking this information and sharing my concern about this. I'm not only concerned about what happened with Power School, but I'm also very concerned that the same thing might reoccur when we go to Infinite Campus. Because if we keep data like this, confidential information like this on the cloud, it is inherently dangerous. And in these days of quantum computing, things that we could never thought would get hacked into, things with the best security systems can be hacked in within 24 hours. So I would suggest that we continue down this thing. Give us some more autonomy as a local school district to make a decision on, you know, how we keep our data. And I, I agree with, with Ms. Barnhart. I think we need to push for only giving you the aggregate data that you need and not, and keep that personally identified information in a very secure, physically secure set of servers here at our district.
Mr. Wildeavor?
I'd like to make the suggestion that Ms. Barnhart and Mr. Perry work together. You know, obviously, Mr. Perry's, this is his expertise area. Ms. Barnhart is working on the Legislative Committee. Maybe they can formulate the letter together and bring it back to the whole board.
Second.
I don't think that was a motion.
It was a motion, yeah, it was. Yeah, sure it was.
Happy to.
I just motioned it.
I don't think we need to have that as a motion. I think they. Dr. Merrick?
I agree with my colleague that we have to be very, very concerned about our data. In terms of having it being stored locally, I am concerned about the increased liability that that would put us under. I don't know that we would be any, I mean, we would probably have less people trying to hack into it. But I am concerned that if it was hacked into, that would, it would open us up to lawsuits. Whereas right now, you know, I, I'm thinking that Infinite Power, whatever, Infinite Campus, whatever, blah, blah, you know, has their lawyers on staff, they're doing everything they can to keep their data safe. I don't think they, that is safe anywhere. I just don't want to open up ourselves to more, to more liability.
Can I talk first? Thanks, Dr. Merrick. I'm, as we look at what happened, I think, being that preventative measure, what are the safeguards that they do have? Do we know the safeguards that Infinite Campus does have to protect us? We're all so frustrated that this, this data breach even happened. We need assurance that every, every single precaution is, is taken. I don't, I'm not a tech person. I don't know all of the ins and outs of it, but, yeah. Ms. Barnhart, you're the only one that hasn't spoken to it.
Well, then, Madam Chair, I'd like to take my time to just recap what my colleagues have said. A potential discussion of higher-up letter of federal issues, including security, specifically with DPI, having a large data breach protocols, concern for that at the state level, potentially change those to be a more privacy law forward and advocate both with DPI to the General Assembly to get that done. Discussing having breaks on the state level, so it's not the entire state with one vendor, which it would be Infinite Campus. Again, advocating for privacy laws, concern for data being on the cloud and slash the length of time that it's stored. Advocating for local districts that we can store our own data, potential concern I heard, potentially it would have some liability for us. But support aggregated data given to the state while holding, withholding personal information, so advocating for that. And then what I translated, my last colleague's advice was to advocate for better safeguards from our vendors as we move forward. So potentially looking at different protocols and processes prior to going into an MOU with Infinite Campus. Sound good?
Does anybody else have anything else to add?
As long as we investigate those two states. One of them was Connecticut, was it, Ms. Barnhart?
That might, Connecticut and another one has very good privacy laws. I can't, I don't recall it off the top of my head.
I wrote it down, I'm trying to find it.
I thought he said Connecticut, Washington, and California. I thought that's what he said.
That's probably it.
What did he say?
It's in here somewhere. I wrote it down. But yeah, I, I really would, let's see what they're doing.
And I will be happy to work with my colleague, Mr. Perry, to help draft that letter and bring it potentially before the Legislative Committee and then before the board, so we can adopt it and send it to the state superintendent.
All right. Dr. Erbarz, did you have anything you wanted to add, sir?
Just, this is one of those situations, I just want to make sure we don't, that the public is aware that the state chooses the system we use for our student information system. We have little control over choosing our own. We don't have the ability to secede from the union sort of in that regard, so.
All right.
But advocacy is always the name of the game, anyway.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Barnhart, for bringing that forward, and thank you, board members, for a good discussion. Let's continue on. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11C for the following purposes: to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 115C-402 and not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes; to prevent disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the family educational rights; to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board; and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment with the school system; or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against any individual employee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Seven, zero, that passes. We are now in closed session. There we go.
All right. All right, sit.
All right, we are back in open.
Madam Chair, I move.
Is your mic on? Is your mic on? Is your mic on?
Oh, Madam Chair, I move we approve the personnel report.
Second that.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Correspondence, does anybody have any? Okay, continuing on announcements. Policy Committee will meet Tuesday, March 11th at 1:00 p.m. here at the BOE. General Public will have the option to view remotely on YouTube. Board of Ed will hold a work session on Friday, March 14th at 1:00 p.m. here at the BOE. General Public will have the option to view remotely. Board of Education will hold a town hall on Tuesday, March 18th at 6:00 p.m. here at the BOE to receive community input about AI. The Board of Education will hold a budget work session on Wednesday, March 19th at 1:00 p.m. here at the BOE. The General Public will have the option to view remotely. The Board of Education will hold an agenda review meeting on Tuesday, March 25th at 2:00 p.m. here. The General Public will have the option to view remotely. The Finance Committee will hold a meeting on Thursday, March 27th at 12:30 here. The Board of Education will hold the April regular board meeting on Tuesday, April 1st, oh good, it's April Fool's Day, at 5:00 p.m. At 5:00 p.m. here, the General Public will have the option to view remotely on YouTube. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
The move.
What, what, I'm sorry. Second.
I think there we have a legislative meeting on...
Oh yes, there is. That was not put on the date.
Yes.
So there is a legislative committee meeting on the 12th.
It'll be here.
Here at the Board of Ed.
2 o'clock? I can't remember all the, all the times I can remember plus...
Give me...
I think it's 2 o'clock on March 12th, which is a Wednesday.
Let me just real quick look it up. It is, yes, 2 o'clock on the 12th. Thank you, Ms. Bernhardt. All right, do... All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Bloomberg? That passes seven zero. We are adjourned.